We are going to ask for a proclamation to bring us back out of closed session.
Moved into that we said. So what was this closed? Close session.
It's been moved and supported that we come out of closed session and that we, once again, resume our reading. Next on the agenda is not. Call the recall the role please. Pardon? Okay, all in favor, I did call for all in favor, all in favor. We do have a proclamation that we did not get on the agenda. At the first meeting in September, and I do want to to read this proclamation, it's for Veterans Day. And as far as I'm concerned with all of our victims, I believe that every day should be Veterans Day. Whereas the nineteen nineteen President Woodrow Wilson first proclaimed the November eleventh as ours to stay. And whereas in nineteen fifty-four President Dwight D Eisenhower signed into law designating November the eleventh being Veterans Day. And where the as the veterans of the United States of America deserve to be held in particularly high regard on Veterans Day. And always for their bravery and selfless commitment to service. And whereas the United States has approximately twenty million veterans, which includes nearly six hundred thousand living in Michigan. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti is proud to be the home of many honorable veterans and service people to be celebrated and congratulated on Veterans Day. And whereas it is our shared responsibility to honor and protect our veterans, just as they have made a brave and selfless commitment to service. Now therefore, I, Lawrence Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and appreciate the contributions and sacrifices of the veterans of the United States of America for their outstanding service while working to ensure the safety of their community and country. Given under my hand and seal of the City of Ypsilanti, November fourteen, twenty twenty-two, Lawrence Allen Richardson, Mayor. And I'd like to not only include veterans in there, but I would also like to include active service people that are active at this time. Well, thank you. Would like to congratulate all of the incoming and outgoing council people at this time. I am going to get out. I wish you all well, and I will continue to keep the city of Ypsilanti and the council in my prayers as we go forth. I do have another engagement that's going to be started, that starts at seven, so I am going to excuse myself. And I wish everyone well, and again, thanks everyone for coming out this evening.
The first post of office is for Mayor Lacan Nicole Brown. I'm going to come down here and stand at the podium.
I state your name.
I, Nicole Brown.
Do I accept the office of mayor?
Hereby I accept the office of mayor.
And further?
And further.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And I will enforce the laws of the United States.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor Brown. Next up is Councilmember Ward one, Roland Tousen. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Roland Tousen.
Hereby accept the office of Councilmember Ward one.
Hereby accept the.
The office of.
Hereby accept the office of Councilmember Ward one.
And further?
And further.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And I will enforce the laws of the United States.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Councilmember. Okay, the next post of office is Councilmember Ward one, Michelle King. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Michelle King.
Hereby accept.
Hereby accept.
The office of Councilmember Ward one.
Office of Councilmember Ward one.
And further?
And further.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinance of. Ordnances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Is not here, so next would be Councilmember Ward three, Desiree Simmons. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Desiree Simmons.
Hereby accept the office.
Hereby accept the office.
Councilmember Ward three.
Of Councilmember Ward three.
And further?
And further.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And I will enforce the laws of the United States.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinances of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, so the new council has been seated. I just want to first thank you very much to the new council members. And I really look forward to us all working together collaboratively to move this campaign forward. That's our job, that's our duty, and I feel that we can work well together to do just that. I know it says here seating of the council, but everybody's in a seat, so.
You do have to call roll of this.
Oh, all right, well, clerk, let me please follow roll.
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Present.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
Councilmember Tousen.
Present.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Kim.
Present.
Six present and one absent, there's a quorum.
All right, and so now we'll move into public comments. So audience, thank you all so much for being here, and it's a little warm and a little cramped, but we'll have three minutes for you to address council of the podium, please state your name and your address if you feel comfortable. And you will follow the buzzers, I'll start with the list here, we don't have anybody signed up. So if anyone in the audience who would like to address council, please begin and pitch to the podium.
This is Tousen. Hello, again, Tousen, I am just so happy to see all of you here tonight. We all had just done a marvelous campaign. I look forward to not only working with Ward one, but with all of you in this community, this community belongs to us. And we're gonna work with you to make sure that we can meet the challenges. We can celebrate those challenges when we have great outcomes. And together as a city, with you leading our ship, we're gonna. So again, congratulations to Michelle, Roland, Nicole, and Desiree. We as a community, we appreciate your presence here, and for those of you who have been serving, thank you so very much. We really do appreciate you and all the work that you do.
Welcome aboard.
Good evening. Ryan Foley, four twenty-five, Amesworth Circle. Lifelong sixty-two year resident of Ypsilanti, Taylor, Southside. Congratulations, Councilperson King, Councilperson Tousen, Councilperson Simmons, and our new mayor, Mayor, along with Councilperson Will Coxon, Councilperson Annie Somerville, will be soon moving up to represent us on a county level. I stated by saying I've been a sixty-two year resident, born right here in the city of Ypsilanti. We waited for this day for a long time. And the day is coming. So I'm really looking forward to the new council that we have in place in the city of Ypsilanti. Looking forward to them working with our current city manager, Mrs. Francis Magmull, and the rest of the staff. We stand here holding you accountable to that oath that you took, that you represent the city of Ypsilanti in their best interest, and uphold those principles that the city of Ypsilanti stands on, pride, diversity, and here. So on behalf of my community, I just want to say to you, congratulations, and thank you for taking the call to be a boss.
She pretty warned me the other day, and I'm gonna comply. No man is an island, no man stands alone. Each man's joy is joy to me, and each man's grief is my own. We need one another, so I will defend each man as my brother and each man as my friend. We have a lot of congrats to do tonight, and I'm so happy to see what I see. I see a bunch of young people, yes, sir. I see a bunch of young people grabbing their torch, getting ready to do their thing. Old folks need to go home somewhere and sit down and teach the young people. Not yet, not yet. I give, I owe the course of council, I've heard a lot of talk about love. Love, 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 and love does, it has a multitude of fault. But watch this, if a person cannot concede, listen to me, listen to the old man. If a person cannot concede to someone that's running for this office that they hold, ain't no love there. There is no love, and he's writing all the time. Congratulations, Ms. King, my neighbor. Congratulations, my son Roland, the first Tousen that has ever took a political seat in the state of Michigan. My daughter Nicole, congratulations to you being the first elected by the people, black woman mayor. And congratulations to you also for taking the low road to make it possible that Lawrence Richardson could become the first appointed black woman. If it had not been for you, she wouldn't have made it. That's why it's important that she should have conceded. Annie, I love you, and you can't do nothing about it. Congratulations to you for the seat that you're gonna go to in January, but don't you forget us. Don't you forget us, please don't forget us. Ms. Simmons, congratulations. I want you to take the MC Hammer approach, you're too legit to quit. And my friend, he's not here, but I wish he was here, Carl Barr. Won his thing, and I knew he would win it from the very beginning, I had no doubt. And I wanna give great things to a special friend of mine that's here today. Detective Sergeant Annette Copey. She is the best of the best, and I appreciate you being here, you know that example of her? She is showing that she care.
Your three minutes is over, thank you so much. I don't know, all the council people by name, I just want to tell everybody, congratulations. And just, I hope that everybody don't forget the community, and don't forget about your own health, and you taking yourself into consideration. Because if you're not your best, you're not gonna be able to support the community.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Anyone else in the audience who would like to move us household?
Welcome, welcome, Mr. Tousen. Hello, Mr. Will Coxon. Congratulations, Dan. Congratulations, Ms. Simmons, big old city manager. It's good to see you all here together, and I hope we can still move before, I'm so proud of you, I'm proud of all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does anyone online who has their numbers?
If anybody participating online would like to make comments, please raise your hand, you'll have three minutes to address city council. No hand, there is.
Um, council, it's okay with you, I think we should take about maybe a ten minute recess so that we can talk to our guests. And if they want to stay inside, but not for us folks to listen to the rest of the meeting, if you don't want to stay for it. Everybody will get that, all right, so we're done for ten. All right. And so, so we're gonna move into our resolutions, motions and discussions. All right, everyone, so I handed them out, I did not write down who I gave them to this side. Moving too quickly, so the first is Robert's order. Okay, resolution number twenty-two-two-five-six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. The city of Ypsilanti City Council adopts Robert's rules of orders, contravention, and I shall move. For this court? All right, movement is supported, any discussion on Robert's rules?
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yeah.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
Um, next is the setting of the daytime and frequency of council meetings. All right, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. The city, Ypsilanti City Council will hold regular meetings at seven PM in the city council chambers located at One South Huron Street, Ypsilanti, Michigan, four eight one nine seven, for the year twenty twenty-three on the following date. They go through all the dates, oh wait, I think that's.
Oh, this is the other one.
Resolution two, two twenty, two twenty twenty-two, two five seven.
Two five seven, that's me.
Our resolution twenty twenty-two, two five seven, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. The regular council meeting shall be held on the first of Tuesday of the month. When a council meeting falls on a holiday or an election day, the next day after said holiday or election day will be the meeting day for the regular meeting, except when council designated, such change will be given public notice. Further, that all regular meetings of the city council will be held at seven PM in the city council chambers located at One South Huron Street, except when the council designates another time and location, such as changing to a public notice. Further, that all council meetings end by ten PM unless council agrees by majority vote to extend deadline and back to move.
I can, movement is supported, any discussion on the daytime frequency? Page one.
Who's the second?
Uh, councilmember Dee Simmons. Not the special, click my book, please call the roll.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
All right, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two five eight.
I got that one. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the procedure for transactional business shall be that business raised by at least one council member, supported by a second council member under council proposed business be referred to the next regular meeting for transaction. This procedure may be waived by the consent of two thirds vote of council. And I so move.
For, movement is supported, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Sorry, I'm just trying to figure, I was like, oh wait, there's something I wanted to read, so, um. It's all this path, I just wanna make sure that this is not what I was thinking.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
No, okay, yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two five nine.
I also have that one. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that Washington County Legal News be designated as the official newspaper of the city of Ypsilanti for placement of all required publication notices and display advertisements, and I so move.
Movement is supported, any discussion on our official newspaper? Any none, but, I'm sorry. No, I do have a question just about why this newspaper, does it have, what kind of circulation? Cause like that's not, I would never think to go there personally, so I'm just wondering why the Washington Times news, like legal news.
This was decided by some councils ago that it was the most economical. A few jurisdictions use it in, in Washington County. It's the, our biggest biggest tool to provide information to the city is still our website and social media pages. And that's kind of where, why it was decided to go with.
I can add, at the time, it was one of the few that was still in print. Cause everyone doesn't have access to digital.
No, I'm just, I just wonder, I just don't know how many people would read, like, read it. Cause I don't know, you know, so I'm just thinking if it's the best place for us to use as our newspaper record, but I don't know if there's not other options, so.
I think, I think until we no longer have to record it in a newspaper record and totally go digital, then that would be an option, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Mayor Brown, this still requires a second.
Yes, no. Any further discussion?
Mr. Burden.
Seeing that, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two six zero. Okay. Adapting the process for appointments to boards and commissions.
So I have a resolution twenty twenty-two dash two six zero, and my only reason I know this part.
You can read the introduction if you like, and then the notes, and then say, leave the rest into the record if you don't wanna go through all of it.
Okay. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, the city council has followed the city council board and commission appointment procedure. That the city clerk shall provide the city council monthly a report consisting of all council appointees, their addresses, and contact information the committee or commission appointed to, and the date of the expiration of their time for our appointee to term expire within the next sixty days. That the mayor, mayor or any city staff person shall notify the city council and city clerk of any vacancy or pending vacancy occurring in any committee or commission as soon as it becomes known. Notice shall be posted to the city website, soliciting nominations for those positions mentioned above at the time of the report or notice of the town.
And the rest may be written, and the rest may be written for the record. I so move, support. All right, movement is seconded, any discussion on the process for appointing to board and commissions? Any none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen? Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
Alright, resolution twenty-two-two-six-one, the setting of the meeting of twenty-twenty-three. Alright. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, the Ypsilanti City Council will hold regular meetings at seven PM in the City Council chambers located at One South Huron Street of Ypsilanti, Michigan, four eight one nine seven for the year twenty-twenty-three on the following dates. January tenth, January twenty-fourth, February seventh, February twenty-first, March seventh, March twenty-one, April fourth, April eighteen, May second, May sixteen, June sixth, June twenty, July eleven, July twenty-five, August first, August fifteen, September fifth, September nineteen, October third, October seventeen, November seventh, November twenty-first, December fifth, December nineteenth. The City of Ypsilanti encourages persons with disabilities to participate, will provide necessary reasonable auxiliary aids and services, such as sign for the hearing, compared limited English proficiency services, audios or printed materials being considered at the meeting to individuals with disabilities upon two days' notice to the city. Individuals with disabilities requiring auxiliary aids or services should contact the city by writing or calling the following, the clerk's city clerk's office at One South Huron Street, All persons are welcome to attend. Additional information may be obtained at the city clerk's office and written comments may be sent to the city clerk's office at the above listed address. I so move.
Support.
movement supported. Any discussion on dates? I do have a question for Council. Yeah, well, I had a question. When I look at the dates, so November seventh is an election day and then, so I was thinking of how it makes sense to move those to the second and fourth.
So currently, there's no planned elections in twenty-twenty-three.
But if there were something that would go to the ballot, that's when it would be held, yes?
It would, yes, but at that time, I would ask to amend the schedule. There's also a possibility, and I believe one of the major.
Yeah, typically, we don't have one, then the click will bring it to our attention and we'll leave the date to us and other day. Or the issue of the day after the thought. Sorry, see, maybe. I was going to inquire about, so sometimes council decides they want to take, like, remove a meeting for a summer break or so we have an extra week between meetings. Does council want to do that or do you want to do the schedule as it is? Is it that we have to, that we can go before we have some meetings?
You have to have a meeting once a month.
At least once a month. If anybody wants somebody, or do you want to need? Once a month, all year. Yeah, I like the idea of a summer break because I was probably going to be gone anyhow for at least one of the meetings. If you remove August fifteenth, you have the most day in your book. So yeah, we will remove August fifteenth, then we get more, more time between those two meetings in the summer. Is there any reason that August fifteenth would be a problem for us to remove that for the evening? Okay, as long as it's not. Well, that's what we agree. I would, if somebody could offer an amendment to this.
Does Ray, would you like to make the amendment?
Just offer that.
Sure, okay, I can offer a friendly amendment to remove August fifteenth.
I support.
Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Seeing none, click my book?
Councilmember Will Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons?
Yeah.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
Thank you. Twenty-two-two-six-two. Alright, resolution number twenty-two-two-six-two resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the City Council elects council liaisons to the advisory commissions. And let the rest be read into the record, I so move. Speaking of this.
Pardon?
Awesome, okay, it's been moved and supported. Okay, so the process for applying council over six meetings has been different depending on, you know, the body. And so I did reach out to council members to see what their interests were as far as sitting on commissions as there have been, you know, several shifts. So I don't know if folks want to, as long as should we nominate and vote on each one or can you just put, place names in the spaces?
However, council would like to do it, it's, it's.
I know, we do it differently every time, so. Pretty much, yeah. Do you want to just? Move the note and then? Or we can go?
Yeah, you want to just write in the initials.
Well, there are some that have not been decided. So I know that Councilmember King, you said you would like the HRC.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember D Simmons, sustainability?
Yes.
Police advisory, Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Parks and recreation, Councilmember Somerville? And then we have an opening for arts commission. Councilmember Will Cox?
We did not.
No, but I heard you want to be on Semco, so I wanted to take a commission away so you have a real good work.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. So are you interested in finding?
Well, I'm interested in staying on this sustainability commission, why is that my commission? Yes, and that's other thing.
So I've got a pretty big job, so I.
Thank you, we're, yeah, definitely.
So we have fine commission, HTC is only where we feel, I know that Councilmember Simmons was fine with doing CBA and HTC. Okay. And then arts commission, we are council number two liaison there. That's the one I know of.
So if, if nobody wants to decide on that one tonight, I can keep that spot until the end of the year, but someone will need to replace that one. It might be, yeah. It might be good for, if like folks are a little interested, maybe going to the next meeting just to see what they're working on, to see if it's looking interest. It's a newer commission, though it started in the beginning of the pandemic, so it's taken a while to kind of.
Everybody comfortable with what we have just gone over?
Yes.
Alright. One question, this one question is, so you're somewhat in talks, are there other committees or groups that we will also be assigned to that aren't ones that were the different these commissions that I listed? There could be, yeah. So some of the ones that are already there, Councilmember like Jay Simmons is on W.A. And she actually would like to remain there. There's Semco, there's the DVA that I am, she liaison to Rutherford Pool, Councilmember Will Cox is the liaison to currently, there's Vice Maternal Committee, which Councilmember Somerville is liaison to, and that is on ad-hoc, so won't go on forever. I don't have the rest to listen from me, I think.
It also, it might help to clarify the difference between, like.
So the, there's also the non-motorized advisory, which is a committee of the county. I'm already going to that. The Rutherford Pool is an honorary thing, you know, it's something that's based on that, it's not the actual commission. I see you second.
The only one that, you know, Mayor Brown was, Corbin County.
Oh, Corbin County, yes, and staff typically go to that. I'll also be invited to attend until the meeting's fall, but we have two staff that already attended that meeting as well. And then council can also end up being like the liaison to other ad hoc committees, and we have a CDO process come up, or we come up with something that we want to have a, you know, a small, so there are opportunities for all of us to use as we move through the year. Any additional questions?
The resolution in total, before we move on, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, that the City Council elects council liaisons to advise, to the advisory commission, process of selecting liaisons until the next organizational meeting, the council liaisons will be as follows. Art commission, Councilmember Somerville, Human Relations Commission, Councilmember King, Police Advisory Commission, Councilmember Tussin, Parks and Recreation Commission, Councilmember Somerville, Sustainability Commission, Council, Councilmember D Simmons, Commission, Councilmember Will Cox, HGCE, Councilmember Simmons, ZVA, Councilmember Simmons.
Jason. Yeah, no, I didn't think about that. Yeah. This fellow didn't make anything.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
Resolution twenty-two-two-six-three?
Okay, resolution twenty-two-two-six-three, resolved by the City of Ypsilanti Council, that the council protocol for city staff shall be as follows, I'm going to read this whole back, so. Council protocol for city staff, governance of the city relies on the cooperative efforts of elected officials who set policy and city staff who analyze problems and issues, make recommendations, implement and administer the council policies. Therefore, every effort should be made to be cooperative, ensure mutual respect for the contributions made by each individual for the good of the community. Conduct toward staff, clear, honest communication that respects the abilities, experience, and dignity of each individual is expected. Poor behavior towards staff is not acceptable. Channels of communication, questions of city staff and/or requests for additional background information should be directed only to the city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney, city clerk, or department heads. The city manager should be copied on any request to department heads. Council members should not set up meetings with department staff directly, but work through department heads who will attend to any meetings with council members. When in doubt about what staff contact is appropriate, council members should ask the city manager for direction. Equal access to information, materials and information supplied to council members in response to a request will be made available to all members of the councils that all have equal access to information. The city manager should ensure that such access is provided when appropriate. Public criticism of employees. Council should never express concerns about the performance of city employee in public to the employee directly or to the employee's manager. Comments about staff performance should only be made to the city manager through private correspondence or conversation. Involvement in administrative functions, do not get involved in administrative functions. Council members must not attempt to influence city staff on the making of appointments, awarding of contracts, selecting of consultants, processing or development applications or granting of city licenses and permits. Attendance at staff meetings, do not attend staff meetings unless requested by staff, even if the council member does not say anything, the council member's presence may imply support, show partiality, intimidate staff, or hamper staff's ability to its job effectively object. Oh, next, request for staff support, ensure required team members of council to request staff support through the city manager, who is responsible for allocating city resources in order to maintain a professional, well-run city government. It's up to the city manager to ensure that staff resources are allocated in accordance with overall council priorities. Research or preparation of material by the city attorney may be requested directly by the mayor or to council members. Response to citizen complaints depend upon the staff to respond to citizen complaints and concerns. It is the role of this council member to pass on concerns and complaints on behalf of the constituents. It is not, however, appropriate to pressure staff to solve a problem in a particular way. Refer citizen complaints to the city manager who will follow up to the appropriate staff. The staff should respond to all approved requests for information in an agreed upon timeframe. It is appropriate for council members to follow up with the manager to determine how the concerns are resolved, and I so move.
Mark, it's been a little bit seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's for you folks, sometimes there's a questionable area. City staff have good at the point that, this has been used in the past significantly, and that's why it's in place.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, we have this in place because we needed something. Previous iterations of council have not always functioned, I wouldn't know, affected or, so we did this to make sure that happened. If there are no further questions or discussion, click my book?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons or D Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
Resolution twenty-two-two-six-four, prevent the rules for audience participation.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti with regard to audience participation, citizens are urged, but not required, to present requests or complaints in writing to the administration before meeting, along with indications of desire to address council. General audience participation normally shall be held to one hour maximum with three minutes added to individuals.
And you'll read the rest into the record?
And I'll read the rest into the record. Support.
Movement seconded. Any discussion on this?
I think in the past, like, we have gone over an hour, we've extended, right?
We have, yeah. I don't think that this has been like a hard and fast, like, stay one hour, people want to speak to us, we typically let them. As long as it stays on a three-minute. Um, yeah, so the one thing I thought this one that I saw is that the audience participation was after the presentation. And I know the last year of council, the ban had changed to have public comment be before presentation. And I think that that is a good practice. Did you set that as a friendly amendment?
I do. I do, too.
Alright, awesome.
It's a hard, it's a hard. You've got people from out of town that are giving presentations, but. Who offered?
Yes, it was.
Councilmember Tussin?
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one ask.
Thank you, alright, so now we will move into nomination and election of the mayor pro temp. And so technically, there's not really my reasons for this, council can do this however we want, so if the council member wants to nominate someone, I'm going to need a second and then we'll vote. If that fails, then we'll have to do it again, so. The floor is open for nominations for representatives.
I would nominate the other way, but.
Alright, I'll second that. Movement seconded. Discussion?
Is there any other nominations?
Oh, sorry.
Call for the nominations and then the council will indicate who they would like if they're in the vote.
Gotcha, okay. Additional nominations? I'd like to nominate to people, Captain?
I'll second that.
Any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? I.
Just for, just for my understanding, what's like the role of a mayor pro temp?
Well, since I just did it, so basically, you would chair the meeting if the mayor is not there, or in the mayor's absence, you would attend meetings, so we would be working collaboratively together to make sure that. City council is fun and working cohesively, but really, the main thing is if, if I were not present, then that person would chair the meeting or attend anything.
So vice mayor, basically.
Fundamentally.
Okay.
If something happened, then they become the mayor. Oh, yeah, that's helpful. Sure, we'd like to tell us why you'd like to be back hometown. We did that last time.
Okay. You know, for the most part, it is a, is. Just the title, most of the time, the, the mayor is here, but I think with the change that we're seeing now, with a lot of new people coming to council, having been here for four years, we've seen a lot of changes in this. This body, about every year, there's been a different person appointed to it. I think I've been consistent in what I've been doing here and. Can run a meeting well, and show the. I want to say the word. Just the experience of having tapped through these meetings and knowing where they're going, but they're happening, and I think. I think I do a good job.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate. The nomination, Michelle King, council member King. And, you know, for me, I would say that I've been following and coming to council. For a long time, so even though I haven't been on council, I have been following since about two thousand seventeen, so. I have a pretty good understanding and have a lot of facilitative experience, so. Thinking about how to move through meetings if we needed to, I feel like I'd be very competent to be able to do that. And just continuing, just general, you know, being in community. Would be great, so. Okay, thank you.
For calling that, we can move us through the votes.
So when you are voting, just indicate the person you're voting for's last name. Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Um, well, I'll vote for Simmons, yeah.
Councilmember King.
Simmons.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Wilcoxen.
Mayor Brown.
Wilcoxen.
Councilmember Somerville.
Wilcoxen.
Councilmember Tousen.
Wilcoxen.
With four Wilcoxens, two Simmons, and one absent, the mayor pro temp is now council member Wilcoxen.
Mayor Tom.
Mayor Pro Temp.
Wilcoxen.
Next on the agenda, we have communication, it just shows the city's holiday closure schedule, so you can refer to that in your packets. And now is our second opportunity for public comment, so please raise your hand if you would like to just, also, you know, three minutes. Mr. Tousen.
Yes.
You got three minutes.
I understand.
Council in combing the city as I usually do. I see. A lot of elderly people. Doing things that they should not be doing this type of season. And that's. Bagging and raking leaves. They pay taxes. For this service. And all actually, they should be getting that service, they shouldn't have to pay taxes, and then go to the hardware store to buy bags and pay little Johnny, little Paul to bag if they leave to sit on the, the street. So I wish that council would do something to help these old people out, because again. They pay taxes, and they don't get the service, city's not giving the, the, the services that they should. Be given to the residents, and I, I think you guys should work diligently to make sure something happened in that arena. Now, everybody loves raises. Everybody loves raises, I, I, I do too. Everybody loves raises, right, council, I don't think no one should get no raises until our policemen. Get raised, because. There are other departments. That will take them. And do great things with them. If we could just figure out some kind of way. To get these policemen more money. I think that they will stay. In the city of Ypsilanti, because Detroit and Hamtramck, I mean, I could, I could call a lot of them, they are paying these guys to come here, to come to them. So let's keep our officers. Give them some kind of incentive to stay.
Anyone else want to leave this council?
All, all I want to say is, again, thank you guys very much, great first meeting, keep it up. And we're depending on you guys, and you can depend on us, thank you.
What else? You online?
If the individual online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. All right, no hands are raised.
Okay, yeah, right, um, so, yeah, remarks from the mayor, okay, well. This is a good first meeting, moved through pretty efficiently, I'll see you all again here tomorrow, so, thank you all for being here, and again, I'm as far as working everyone on council. And council member Dee Simmons, I think, did not wire votes, oh, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, I'd like to congratulate all the council members. And remind you that the workshop for council members will be four o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Oh, yes, please don't miss that. All right, council member Dee Simmons.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that the city council meeting is adjourned on call by the mayor or three members of council, I so offer.
The meeting is adjourned.